The regular council meeting, August the 7th, 2013, will now be called to order. I ask the city clerk to please do the roll call.
Mr. Michael?
Here.
Mr. Chen?
Here.
Mr. Plumbah?
Here.
Mr. Kirin?
Here.
Mayor Pike?
Here. Let's pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Before we have our guest speaker, I'd like to make some comments. About the violence that's been going on in the East End. I'm an East-ender, and I live very close to it. It affects me as much, if not more than most. As mayor of the city of Uniontown, that's my home, my heart, and my love. Now, Mr. Michael met with the people from Persian Court today. We're going to have an open meeting that anyone can come to. We're going to do everything that we can possibly do to get to the bottom of this, to try our best to keep ourselves, our family, our friends, and the community out of harm's way. You know, I think it might have been Hillary Clinton that said, "It takes the village to raise the family." No chief of police, no mayor, no individual is going to be able to clean up a real mess. We have to do this together. There's power, power in numbers. We now have to come together for the better of our community. I think even, was it Winston Churchill said, "We all earn a living by what we make. We earn a life by what we give." So let's give, let's work together, let's be a community, let's all be a family. Not any one of us, but each and every one of us. Phil, would you like to make comment on what you talked to today with reference?
Thank you, Mayor. Last night, the police chief had a meeting with the concerned citizens of the East End, which I attended, and I took some of those concerns that you had. And the chief and I spoke to Persian Court management today. Philip Hallen and his boss, Anthony, what's Anthony's last name?
Williams.
Huh?
Williams.
Williams. We spoke to Anthony on the phone. We expressed the concerns that, the meeting from last night, and we, I expressed, I explained to them that the mayor is going to be sending them a letter, illustrating some of the concerns and inviting them to a meeting. And that meeting's going to be open, it's going to be here at the city hall. Because I feel important that the council take a role in this. It's going to be an open meeting because all the councils are going to be invited to it. And any resident of the city or concerned citizen is going to be invited to it. And we're going to ask them to come down, and that's the first step. I also explained to them that if that step isn't the step that resolves this, there are some continued steps. The mayor and I spoke to the solicitor, and he has some ideas. If this doesn't work, then where we're going to go next. So we do have a plan in place. We are going to set up a meeting in the next couple of weeks. It's going to be, I'll talk to, we'll try to get some good dates for everybody and good times. Not sure about that yet, but we'll get the times and dates, and we'll be able to advertise that as a public meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Did anybody else on the council want to talk about this before we have the guest speaker?
It is, it's a shame. Other people have come to me, personal friends of mine live in the area, called me up and told me about it. I'm disheartened by it. You know, I'm charged with parts of my creation. You know, there's mugging down there, the headlines, which it's a shame to hear things like that. I get frustrated too, because we have so much vandalism down there. As a body, we're trying to make the park a really nice place. And there's just individuals out there that just don't care. And, you know, I had, I don't know, sometimes, I'll be honest with you, I don't have the answers to know how to curb such behavior. I just think, as the mayor said, we should all work together. There's been break-ins at Bailey, things been stolen for the kids. We had got championship shirts for the basketball teams who were involved in the basketball league down there. We had a break-in, all the shirts were stolen. Some trophy items were stolen, we planned to give out to the kids. So, you know, I know it's a far cry from shootings and things that are happening, but it's all part of the growing problem. And I just think we need to, our youth needs to look at these things and treasure them like we did when we were younger. Just treasure peace, just try to get along with one another. I'm racking my brain trying to figure some things out. If there's anything I can do, I'm up here to listen. But I'm trying to give back to the people of the community and try to just give them a good place for youth to come play, sports of all ages, all sports, all whatever. And I delight myself in that, but certain youths come down and they spray paint, illicit things on the walls, you know, do things in our bathrooms that the bathrooms weren't meant to be after you just get done painting them and stuff like that, and forces me to lock the bathrooms. You know, I don't know, I don't have the answers. I personally bought, personally got some surveillance cameras that I got from Uniontown High School that they were selling to after they did the renovations. And I'm going to put those up at the Bailey Park and things like that. Maybe surveillance equipment like that may be a step in the right direction for not just Bailey Park, for hotspots in the city where these crimes are going on. I don't know. But I just want to echo what we were dealing with down Bailey and trying to, you know, find out who's vandalizing, who's stealing, you know, because we're trying to make it a good place. And I believe in the citizens of Uniontown, I believe in this place, as the mayor does, and us council. And it's a little disheartening when you put all your heart into something and you see shootings in this town, and then, you know, even in parks where it's supposed to be a peaceful place where kids come to play, and there's muggies going on and stuff like that. And I think we all are heading in the right direction, trying to address the situation. And we're willing to hear whatever anybody has to say.
I believe that Uniontown wants to remain the head of their house. I do believe that Persian Court's owners needs to be held accountable to be the head of their house too. Whatever we have to do legally, we got to do. We can't wait, we can't sweep it under the rug. We got to act on it, and we got to act on it to get it. Anybody else? Mr. Jones? All right, we'll have our guest speaker, Dr. Yarbar.
Mayor Pike, members of the Uniontown City Council. Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. I find myself once again representing the Black Churches of the East End Ministry Alliance, the East End Concerned Citizens, numerous individuals from the East End community, and the support of the president of the NAACP, Ms. Gwendolyn Ridgely. When I appeared before you on May the 8th in 2013 of this year, we asked for your help and no action was taken. A few weeks later, a young man was shot and killed in the East End community. We're here again to ask for your cooperation and assistance. Personally, I'm glad to hear you contacted the management of Persian Court. The chief of police, Mr. Jason Cox, was kind enough to meet with us yesterday and start a dialogue on how to assist him and his officers, as well as help ourselves. We realize that this is a spiritual battle, and it's nothing that we can do. But we're trying. We recognize that many people are fed up, frustrated, scared, and want something done. We also recognize, as stated yesterday, the police are limited in what they can do. I'm glad that you guys took some steps today, and you made some statements today, which is great, and I hope you follow through with that. But if the conversation doesn't yield us some kind of positive results, one of the considerations we hope that you will consider will be, we want to talk about two issues today, and one of those being if something doesn't happen from your meeting. The first thing we need you to address is the grass in the East End area near and around Persian Court's very high. Therefore, we're asking that code enforcement officer deal with this issue. So the grass gets cut, and it gets cut soon. What's happening is, some of the criminals or those who are partaking in criminal activity are using the grass as alternate routes and hiding them, different things of that nature. The second thing is, if the conversation with the management of Persian Court doesn't work, Mr. Michaels was present, as he stated yesterday, we thank him for his brief visit, but we're asking the city council in cooperation with us as a group to draft a complaint to HUD in regards to the management of Persian Court. Persian Court management has failed its residents and the city by not providing decent, safe living environment, which you've already stated. We in turn plan to collect, compile, file letters of complaints, and sign petitions with the local and national branches of HUD in hopes of getting something done to provide a decent, safe living environment for all the residents of Persian Court, so they don't have to live in fear and fear for their lives. And I thank you for listening, and for including me on behalf of those who sent me here.
Sir, I have just a couple of your concerns.
Sure.
I did speak to them about the grass, they said the grass is cut twice a week. They did say that they have had some drainage problems in the back, they tried to fix some of them. I encouraged them to try to fix the other ones. I plan on going up there and looking at those in the next couple of days. And I did tell them that that's a concern that we're going to bring to the meeting. Also, and I failed to say this when I first spoke, I told them the letter that we sent them about our concerns, we're going to CC or forward to HUD, and we're going to put HUD on notice that we are going to start the process of communication. So if this fails, we're going to have to go to the next step. And I explained that to Mr. Hallen and Mr. Williams today in our comments.
Although that's a privately owned place up there, it's not owned by the housing authority. There are recipients of the house, of HUD. But the owner of that particular, they should be the one held responsible for that.
Correct.
I also talked to our engineer, who I guess isn't here tonight, and he gave me a couple of suggestions, and our solicitor. So we are going to continue to try to, again, address some of these issues. The reason why the mayor and I, the mayor allowed me to do this, to meet with them first, is I believe that we should, as a group, and it's our meeting, it's our meeting, it's our meeting, all of us. I think as a group, we should, you know, let them know that we're serious about this. We have met with them before at the East End with three or four members of the East End community group, and Persian Court, and we have met with them since you came in May. We just haven't done it all as a group. So I think that's the first step, and our engineer suggested that being the first step. And if we have to go to a second step, I think the engineer and the solicitor will advise us to do that, and we will.
And that's all we're asking.
No, I just don't want to think, we have, and I think some members of the group will tell you, we have addressed it, it's just that we need to do it in the right direction, and we're just trying to find it.
Well, we did meet with, up at the community center, with the people that own, and their representatives, that own Persian Court. And they give us all kinds of reasons that night why this is going on, but no correction?
I also asked Mr. Williams, who I guess is the overseer of Persian Court, well, no, he's the site manager's boss. I also asked him to bring his boss, and to bring other senior managers, because I don't believe that we've been able to contact the senior management of this crossgate. Was it Crossgate?
Crosscase.
Crosscase. We haven't been able to get to the top, and I asked him to bring some other representatives to the meeting, so we can get them all in the room and ask them, and we can all ask them the questions that we have.
Right. And although they are privately owned, since they are receiving federal funds, they must provide a safe environment for the residents.
Please, sir, have a root.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, would you gentlemen like to introduce yourselves?
My name is Bob Walker, I'm the administrative director for FAAD EMS.
Hey, my name's Rick Adabata, I'm chief at FAAD EMS.
Would you tell us what your deal is now, what your assignment is?
We were contacted last Thursday, or two Thursdays ago, and started operation Sunday morning, that following, three days later, Sunday morning, serving the citizens of the city of Uniontown with ambulance service, which previously was supplied by Uniontown Fireman's Ambulance Department.
They are, we met a couple of times, we met before this meeting. And in the next couple of weeks, FAAD EMS has offered to do some community fairs with us. We're probably going to do something at the summer concert series. We're going to talk to the East End, we did ask Gina to come up abruptly, ask her, but we're going to try to do something. He said, but FAAD EMS has been very helpful, and they want to do more in the community, and we're going to try to help sponsor them doing that, health fairs, blood pressure screening, that kind of thing.
How many employees do you say you have?
We have, company-wide, we have under FAAD EMS about 110, and 21 trucks. We have 21 ambulances, 11 stations scattered throughout the county, including Mount Uniontown would be the 11th station we have in the county. We have a pretty depth, we have, our depth is pretty deep. At any given time, there's at least 11 crews working in the county, I'm sorry, 12, correction. There's at least 12 crews working. Daylight hours, there's 16 or 17 crews working in the county. We've been here two weeks now. All the response times have been more than adequate. We pride ourselves into holding a better response time than the city of Pittsburgh, and even over in a rural county. So our response time countywide is better than the average in the state by a long shot. We're very honored that we were chosen to be here at the city of Uniontown, and we take very good pride. And we've hired a great number of the former employees at Uniontown Fireman's Ambulance and into our systems. Those who have came, by and large, have been hired.
We only had three or four nights, but just together it all worked out. Glad that everybody's safe and not harm's way at any.
Everything seemed to work out, Mayor, very well. Surprisingly, very little, virtually no complications whatsoever. And we thought at least the first couple of days it would be a learning curve, but having the former employees, you know, happened on Thursday. Saturday morning, we were doing hiring, and Monday morning, we were still doing hiring. So, and it's all worked out, and the firemen have been very cooperative.
I want to thank Kim Renz, he had lead, he was, and Kim Marshall. We were a part of the mayor. Also, the mayor always says he's an East-ender. He pushed us, which we did. We're going to put a truck to the East End at the fire station, there's going to be ambulance there, hopefully starting Monday. We've got to work out a couple of things, but they've been very willing to do that. And so we'll have an ambulance in the East End, probably 16 hours a day for right now. And, but also they can respond from Hopwood and North Union. But we're definitely going to have a truck up there, an ambulance up there, a good part of that.
I wanted that, everyone says that.
Probably from morning to late evening, so 16 hours. I'm more excited about that, I think we need to spread services out throughout the community.
Mayor, it happened so fast, I think logistically there was some issues that had to be worked out to get that ambulance here, but.
I think it'll be there Monday.
As Bob and I say, and our board directors, we now work for the city of Uniontown along with our other municipalities, North Union, 25 other, pardon me?
Unlike government, that was government action.
No, that's, quick action. Quick action.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any comments from anyone on any agenda items?
Yes. I'd like to say that at 1:30 this morning, I was going to drop off some mail, and I was very surprised and very happy that I did see cops states. They were actually at the entrance of coming into East End this morning. There was two cop cars there, and I was pretty happy. That means that anybody was coming in, they were going to, if there was some odd activities, they'd been right on it. So I did notice that they were there about 1:30 this morning. I'm the one that, the house was shot at five times. Two of the bullets came through my house. I know that the cops are riding, and I know they're trying, but I don't know how, the kids are getting the guns, and it's just dangerous because that night was the first night I was actually very scared. When two of the bullets come through the house, through the walls, and in your house, you know, that's pretty dangerous stuff, you know. It not only hit my house five times, the house before mine was five times, but I also know that we have good neighbors in the neighborhood. The guy on my street went down there by Persian Court yesterday and today, and he cut, because the city said the tree wasn't theirs. Persian Court said it wasn't theirs, so he took it up on himself to cut down a lot of those trees, so now you could see from my street over into the project where those trees were hanging. There's still that pine tree needing to be trimmed, where you could actually see from my street cross instead of looking at the bushes. And that's the safety for the people and the police officer when they do run.
What street are you on?
I'm on Carlisle. I get a hit all the time, you know. And another thing is, I know that the police officer told me yesterday that it's up to the newspaper company who puts what in the paper. But I know there has been a lot of things that happened around my house in the last two months that never hit the papers. And I think that sometimes, the people in East End need to know what's going on around their house, they could be a little bit more cautious, and a little bit more safer on protecting their property. You know, I had to put locks on my gates because I got robbed twice, and, you know, and I just don't, I mean, I know that the police officer there, but I don't know how we're going to handle the kids that are just being mischievous. You know, I'm just scared, that's all I'm going to say. I'm scared, and I know it's soft for their air, but, you know.
Well, as a parent, person knows what it takes to control their own family, their own household, and controlling a community, it's a lot more, there's a lot more to take. So, like I said, we have to stay together on this. Not any one of us can solve this, we've got to solve it together, and we will. Even bad, don't let us, right?
I know.
Yes?
Mayor, in response to the meeting that is going to happen with Persian Court, is there any way that we can have a formal letter sent to Crossgate with an invite that's listing who we want there? I understand that we've met with Anthony and Philip, and we've done our part, but I just think there's been too many meetings, and we really need the action to happen. And we want to work with city council, and we want to make sure that it comes through city council. But we will be more than prepared to submit the information to HUD at the local and national level without hesitation. So we would just like there to be a formal process when talking to Persian Court and Crossgate, that there's a record of communication, that we sent you this letter on this date inviting you, this is who we want there, this is when we will have it. I just would like us to be more formal in the process, because if they don't do anything, we're ready to take it to that level.
Yeah, and the meeting's going to be a special meeting of council, so we're going to be here.
Right.
It's going to be open video.
Right.
We're going to have records, and we're definitely sending the letter. The letter's going to be specific on what issues we have, and who we'd like to. I'd like to see some of the senior management.
Three or four years ago, I met with the man that owns it, and he's a noted gentleman. And I don't see why we can't get him back. He was pretty good to talk to, and I think that he would know. I mean, if you put something to the bottom, they're going to pass it to the top. You bring it to the top, they're going to take it down. So I think we need to get the man that owns it involved in this meeting.
Agreed. And if we could have a copy of the letter, please, that would be really good.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes?
I'm a parent of four kids, and we have shootings on Liberty Street by often. Now, I live at the crest of the hill, there's a yard beside me with high grass. And there's a fence right there, and some of the folks will go by that fence where you can't see them, and they'll gun up the street. Now, I seen that one occasion, on another occasion, I had brought Miss Gina with me to my house. They were shooting from the other side of the street, of Liberty Street, and left a bullet. I know if she was standing there, she'd have got it in the head. And I've got four kids, their aim had hit my upstairs, downstairs, 12 bullets in my house. And I'm asking if we can have some kind of streetlights, some mirrors, or just some more patrol up in Liberty Street, because they go from Persian Court right at the bottom. And they're going to use rock top and go straight through the woods, and then right back where they need to be. And the alleys are completely dark. I've had people parked in my yard, asking me, "What are you doing here?" And this is my yard. And they're doing their transaction in these dark alleys. And all good is go back down the alley, Persian Court, go through the woods.
So I think there's two things on that. One is the light on the corner where that lot is, and then the code enforcement for that lot to be maintained, because it is owned by somebody.
Do you know where the lot is?
So if there, if those two things could happen on Liberty, I think that would help in the meantime.
If you bring the address to, with code, and see if I may get a light.
There's no one there. Jason?
No, sir. Do you have the lights in the alleys back there?
So, there's some lights out on Liberty Street?
There's no lights period.
There's not a light, there's not a light at all. There's a pole, there's just no light.
Can we go, see if we can light on Liberty Street?
There's no light on Liberty Street?
Right, and the alleys, it's just dark, it's pretty dark right there.
What address are you going?
I'm at 176 Liberty Street.
Directly across.
And we'll go with the address.
Yeah.
Any other comments? If not, I'll ask the city clerk to read the resolutions.
Here we thought by city council, the city of Uniontown, to accept a report of the treasure from the month of July 2013. Being hereby accepted and filed.
No comments. Hello, both?
No comment.
Mr. Gary? No comment.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Plumbah?
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Kirin?
No.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
Resolved by the city council, the city of Uniontown, to hereby accept the minutes of the July 2013 regular council meeting.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Plumbah?
No comment.
Mr. Gary? No comment.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Plumbah?
Yes.
Mr. Kirin?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
Here we thought by the city council, the city of Uniontown, council hereby direct the director of the council finance to make payment of the following invoices for services rendered, products pursued for the city of Uniontown for July 2013 invoice. The general fund, $115,233.69. The reward fund, $42,537.14. Recreation fund, $6,445.72. Highway fund, $12,623.22. Recycling fund, $3,022.72. Off-street, $17,835.67. Community development, $113.62.
Mr. Mike?
No comment.
Mr. Jones? Mr. Plumbah?
No comment.
Mr. Gary?
No comment.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Plumbah?
Yes.
Mr. Kirin?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
We resolve by the City Council, the City of Uniontown, to adopt Bill Number nineteen sixteen ninety-one, for Post Ordinance Number sixteen seventy-three, and ordinance, amending Ordinance Number sixteen seventy enacted June fifth, two thousand thirteen, by the City of Uniontown to amend the definition of the term "local traffic contained therein."
No comment.
Mr. Jones? Mr. Palumbo?
No comment.
Mr. Gary?
Uh, just referring, this is, uh, enacting and cleaning up what we had talked about at the last meeting?
Yeah.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
We resolve by the City Council, the City of Uniontown, the Fay at EMS has been appointed by the City of Uniontown to be the nine-one-one ambulance provider for the City of Uniontown on a month-to-month basis until December thirty first, two thousand thirteen, at which time the agreement will be reviewed for the purpose of permanent no rent. The monthly rent during their time period will be one thousand dollars.
No comment.
Mr. Jones? Mr. Palumbo?
No comment.
Mr. Gary?
Uh, all I, uh, thank you for your, uh, for your help and your service so far. I agree that, uh, the transition has been, uh, very smooth, and, uh, and things are going very well, and, uh, hopefully continues to, uh, to go, to go that way. Okay.
Very good.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
We resolve by the City Council, the City of Uniontown, to approve the revised investment policy statement for the Fire and Police Pension Plan, and the unit recommended by the Fire and Police Pension Board.
No comment.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
We're asking for a comment.
Where you been? I had used the lady truck.
Mr. Palumbo?
No comment.
Mr. Gary?
No comment.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
We resolve by the City Council, the City of Uniontown, and it is hereby resolved by authority of the same, the Councilman Blair Jones, be authorized and directed to fund attached agility agreement entered into by between the Department of Transportation and the City of Uniontown.
No comment.
Mr. Jones?
That agility program is an agreement between the state and the city where they do things for us, we do things for them. Uh, we had one ten years ago, they shut it on out, I didn't know it ran out, but like, they'll come in and, and do things on the streets and things for us, and we went out and swept our highways and this and that, so I think it's a good.
Mr. Palumbo?
I echo, it's a good, uh, a good teamwork effort by both agencies.
Mr. Gary?
I was gonna ask Blair, but as I, uh, look, look down here on the item four, is this then a five-year deal?
It's a ten-year deal.
Is it a ten?
Yeah, supposed to be a ten-year deal.
Wait, initial five-year, maybe we got the renewal for, for another five?
Yes.
Yeah, but that's on, that's on us, yeah.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
We resolve by the City Council, the City of Uniontown, and it is hereby resolved by authority of the City Council of the City of Uniontown, Fay County, and it is hereby resolved by authority of the same, as the mayor is authorized and directed to commit the attached application for traffic signal approval for construction projects, number fifty-one, Pittsburgh Street, and Northmore, Mount Vernon Avenue, West Lake Traffic Signal Maintenance Agreement Number one-two-zero-four-two-three.
No comment.
Mr. Jones?
No comment.
Mr. Palumbo?
No comment.
Mr. Gary?
Is this just a, the, the traffic agreement, or does it have anything to do with the easement that, uh, in right of way that we were, we were giving them, or is that the?
It's just a ticket.
Yeah.
There was over, what, mark, one and a half million dollars spent there in the corner?
That's correct.
Very good.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
Fire Chief, it's your turn.
Mayor, how are you?
All right.
Um, August seventeenth, uh, if it's with the gracious and the consent of council, we're gonna do our MDA boot drive for Jerry's kids for Musco District, um, this Saturday, August seventeenth, nine-one-one, uh, be our annual drive for raise money for Jerry's kids, if that's okay with council? I hope that's okay.
You asked for vote?
I'm asking for your permission, Mayor.
Do we need a resolution?
Everybody had objection to that?
We didn't do a license.
I appreciate it. No, yeah. Uh, it's been a smooth transition with the ambulances, with Fay, I think, uh, things have won as well as could be expected in such short notice, um, working real well together. Hope to continue that relationship, I mean, um, I know Rick and Bob real well, we haven't had any problems to date, so keeping everybody looped with that, Mr. Renzi and Phil. Um, other than that, area's a bit fire, I also think we did get the roof flash to the East End, so that's all.
Is that all complete now?
Yes, sir. Um, other than that, um, appreciate your support, and we continue to work with you guys, and if you need me, uh, like I told Jason, if there's something we can do to assist it, uh, in the East End, the Persian Court, you know, we're willing to go up and do, uh, you know, fire prevention with the kids, we've done that in the past, and we'll continue to do that. Um, the East End Firehouse, you know, is a safe haven, and if somebody feels necessary they need some protection, the East End Fire Station's there, um, that's considered a safe haven, so, you know, East End, you're, you're more than willing, if you have any problems, that's someplace you can go and feel protected until we get a policeman up there. Other than that, life's grand, if you know we can.
That's great, see what I mean about coming together? We sometimes do need a safe haven to go to. I remember when, two, three months ago, two bullets just missed my bedroom about seven feet, so I was as close to the bullets as you can get without getting hit. So it's pretty nice to know that we can feel safe, and we have a place to go to.
Yeah, Chief, you wanna, uh, mention, uh, our short timer coming up here?
Yeah, Captain Lovett, uh, his last day will be August thirty-first. Uh, Mark and I joined the department in January, as volunteers in January nineteen seventy-two. Uh, Mark's been on the job since nineteen seventy-eight. Tremendous firefighter, he's my eyes and ears inside burning buildings, somebody I can put my total trust in and know he's gonna be the last one coming out, and sometimes we have to go in and drag him out, but, uh, he's gonna really be missed, and I'll wish him well, um, in the future.
We all have to say.
And I'll continue to tell him what we're saying when he's retired.
I don't think he wants to hear that.
Chief, are we casting this month?
Uh, yes, um, applications, I need your final data due on August the twelfth, and the Civil Service Commission's gonna meet on the thirteenth. The physical agility test is scheduled for August twenty-eighth at the Uniontown High School.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, I'm sorry, it's a Wednesday, I guess. Um, at the high school, the physical agility test, and then a written test will be scheduled, uh, sometime in September.
Is that it?
That's all I got, Mayor, thank you.
All right, Chief. Please, Chief, save the best for last.
As Pastor Yorber indicated, uh, you know, we've had quite a busy few days, starting with the, uh, the first of the month, um, and going through this weekend with, uh, crimes of violence and, and shooting type incidents in the, uh, East End area, Union Town. Uh, we did have an opportunity to meet last night and get some dialogue started to, you know, come together and try to resolve some of these problems. Uh, it was a heavily attended meeting, so that was encouraging, and I think we're gonna take the necessary steps, you know, as a police department, as the city, as the residents, to try to move forward in curtailing some of these types of activities. Um, from a police department standpoint, you know, as a manager, I'll continue to evaluate, uh, the needs in particular areas and communities, will allocate, you know, the necessary resource and, and, uh, you know, in regards to, uh, tactics and manpower and those types of things to try to be prepared and, uh, deal with the situations at hand. Um, you know, additionally, uh, we've been facing as a police, well, at the citizens of Union Town, the police department has been, uh, receiving a lot of calls for daytime and early evening burglaries. Um, the basic MO has been that, uh, one or more individuals are pushing in air conditioner units, entering the structure behind the air conditioner, grabbing valuables, uh, and technology type items, iPads, iPods, uh, leaving and going to pawn shops and, and, you know, looking for that quick money, so, you know, we assume that it is gonna be a drug-related type crime, but, uh, with, with putting warnings out on, on our Facebook, uh, for specific areas, if you're not a friend for, of, of the police department on Facebook, please feel free to, to friend us, and we'll continue to, uh, be diligent in investigating those incidents.
Well, we know that your job's not easy, as well as the fire company, you guys do a terrific job, whether you notice it or not, we're all proud of you. So, we know every day that you put your life and arms' weight, and arms' weight, in a big way, so we don't forget it. Sometimes we get frustrated because we can't conquer what we will, and we gotta do it together. And anyone else? Anybody up here want to say something?
Just, uh, let people know, um, Recreation Department along with the Street Department, uh, have put new basketball courts in Grand Street Park, and, uh, the only thing left that they, they paving today, they finished it up, it's very, very nice. Um, it's gonna be a really nice court, one probably one of the nicest courts in town, um, you know, with the trees, and, and they're gonna put benches in, uh, so hundreds of people can sit and watch games, and it's gonna be an alternate, alternate site for another tournament we're gonna have, uh, next, next season. So, uh, if you get a chance, go down and take a look, it's really, really nice, it's on previous, uh, spot where the tennis courts used to be, and, uh, it really turned out really nice. The only thing we have to do now is put the lines down on the court, and, uh, it'll be totally finished, the hoops are up, and looks really, really nice, so if you get a chance, it's gonna dress the, dress the park up really nice, so, we're not done with that place, so.
Council, did you talk about Sunday as well?
Oh, um, Sunday is, uh, Parks and Recreation Fun Day, uh, fireworks will be down Bailey Park for all of you who want to see those, and also we invite you to come down and, uh, share the festivities and, uh, uh, just, uh, member the Fay as they may, or may not be able to, maybe have a presence on their big show. Okay? That's great, um, appreciate that. And, uh, so we'll try to have a DJ down there and a bouncy house and things like that, and championship, uh, basketball games, and a baseball game will be going on as well, so stop down, we love, uh, Sunday, from three o'clock to, uh, till after fireworks at night. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, remind me. Mark? You had something?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to just inform the council that, uh, Department of Community and Economic Development has released the final guidelines for two thousand thirteen CBG dollars, and the city's eligible for three hundred thousand dollars, uh, in a community development block grant. So we're, uh, today we have, uh, the first citizen participation hearing, uh, we request any participation from the public, they can contact the redevelopment authority at sixty-five West Main, and, uh, any suggestions.
Even if three hundred thousand, or seventy-five thousand are Chuck, the, the fire truck can sell it, right?
That's correct. So we'll be working on the application and, uh, final, should have the final application ready for, uh, by the third week of August, we'll have a final public hearing to go over the budget, and we'll submit it to council at their September meeting for approval, and we have to have it to, uh, Department of Community and Economic Development by September sixth. So that's kinda where we're at with the schedule for that. Uh, also, block grant funds we used, uh, in conjunction with city funds to replace the East End, uh, fire station roof, it's complete, uh, we're just waiting for some paperwork and warranty information and, uh, certified payrolls from a contractor.
Also, police station also, we just put a little face if, yeah, to.
And, uh, we're getting ready to pave Cool Spring Street, they're scheduled to come in next Tuesday and start to pave, paving, so it'll be a two-day job. We're gonna pave Cool Spring from the city limits all the way down to East Main Street. And, uh, probably everybody noticed the keys cut in the side streets and things, so they're on schedule, if they don't get rained out, to come in next Tuesday, start to pave.
How long have you worked for the city, Mark?
Two thousand one.
Uh, then, how do you think we're running?
Think we're going real well, in tough times. Probably the toughest times, uh, for grant funds since I've been here. And, uh, you know, we're still plugging along, trying to get it, as, as many of the projects done as we can, so we're, we're still keeping at it, but, uh, we're also, we started our other house on one street across from the new park.
Yeah, it looks good, it's about completed next year.
Should be done by fall, and, uh, hopefully we'll sell that one and start one next year. So we're trying to rebuild all our vacant lots that we can. We're also gonna have a meeting at the end of August, uh, to look at a low, uh, look at a tax credit application, do thirty more houses in the City of Union Town for low, low income, be a rent owner, to help.
And all the houses on Maple, the ten, they're sold?
They're sold, yeah. Yeah, we've sold all, so we're steadily working at it, it's getting tougher.
Well, I think the senior building where the regulation was, that was a seven and a half million dollar, you thought?
Correct.
Maple Street was like a two and a half million dollar. Mamby Homes was seven and a half million.
Yes.
Uh, where the food day in place, that's three million. We're moving, we're moving, we're gonna build the tax base up so that maybe life can be a whole lot easier for all of us.
Yeah, as many homes that we've demolished since I've been here in two thousand one, um, the repl, you know, we haven't replaced them as, as quickly as, uh, we would like, you know?
Correctly, if I'm wrong, we returned about fourteen million dollars worth of grant money in to about seventy million dollars worth of investment in the last four and a half years.
That's correct. Private investment, public private investment. We, we hope those opportunities keep presenting themselves to us, but we'll take advantage.
We'll take advantage. Is that it?
We resolve by the City Council, the City of Union Town, the council adjourns to meet Wednesday, September fourth, two thousand thirteen, December twenty-ten. Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
I'd like to ask, uh, Mark a question before we adjourn. Mark? Uh, we talked the other day on the, uh, anything gonna take place on potentially a new comprehensive plan in the, in the city, because the other ones?
Our current, our current grants and plan is due for update. Uh, they used that grant, a grant that we can apply for to update that, and, uh, they since discontinued that, so it's probably, uh, about thirty thousand, forty thousand dollars processed to upgrade our, our, uh, plan, our grants and plan. But it, it, you're correct, it doesn't, it should be updated about every ten years.
Is it, uh?
And it was completed in two thousand two, so.
Can we use CGDB money for that?
No, we can't.
Okay. Eligible.
One more question.
Yes, sir.
In the past four and a half years, did we raise nearly nine hundred thousand dollars for our police department?
That's correct.
Okay.
Sounds good.
With the help of the chief, he's been very active.
Yes, very, very.
With Oriel Street, with Main Street.
That don't mean he just raised. Yes.
Here, Mayor Pike?
Yes.